Welcome all of you to the School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Kim Perkel and I am the Chair of the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce. And I'm also an owner of Blonik, Perkel &amp; Stoll, a law firm right here in Prior Lake. On behalf of the Prior Lake Chamber, I want to welcome all of you, including our candidates, to tonight's forum. The candidates will introduce themselves shortly. Just a friendly reminder, please turn off all cell phones. We also ask that you refrain from clapping or talking among each other during the forum. Also, we ask that you not wear anything that attempts to support one candidate more than another, so no buttons or apparel supporting more than one candidate. Please join us now for the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand, please. Again, I want to thank all of our candidates for their willingness to attend tonight's forum. I want to thank all of you for being here this evening and for all of our viewers at home. You will notice on the ballot for November 6th that there are 11 school board candidates, but even state school math, you'll see that there are only 10 candidates here. That means that we're missing one, and unfortunately, Ms. Sarah Ripke Lloyd is no longer actively campaigning. It wasn't just that she chose not to participate due to personal reasons, she's just not able to campaign any longer. We offer a special thank you to the city and the city staff for opening up their doors and giving us this opportunity. We think this is a great way for our residents and our business owners and our community to get to know their candidates before they cast their vote on November 6th. This forum is being broadcast live on the Prior Lake Public Access Cable TV channel. We hope that you find this an asset for you before you cast your vote on November 6th. We are running things a little bit differently than we have in years past. I do have several prepared questions for this evening. We did solicit community feedback, and a screening committee has reviewed every question received from the community. Based on the screening committee's review of the same, each candidate will be asked at least three questions. If we have time, we will ask additional questions. These questions were selected with two primary goals in mind: to ask questions that would allow candidates to provide unique and thoughtful responses, and to ensure that we could focus on topics that the public wanted to know about. The candidates themselves have not seen the questions for this evening. We are not taking any audience questions tonight. However, should you find that you have a particular question for a candidate, you can feel free to contact that candidate directly. As a reminder, the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce does not endorse any particular candidate. We just encourage all of you to be informed and to get out and vote on November 6th. We have some rules for this evening, so we can be respectful of everyone's time. I will call on each candidate to introduce themselves and perhaps tell us why they are seeking election. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds for this part of the forum. After opening remarks, I will ask a question, and each candidate will be given up to 90 seconds for their response. And I will repeat the question for each candidate. There will be no set opportunity for rebuttals. However, we have given each candidate 90 seconds for closing remarks, and you could feel free to use that for any rebuttals you may want to offer. We will let each candidate know when he or she has 30 seconds left out of their 90 seconds for answering the question with the bright yellow card. And we will also let you know when you're out of time and you will see the red card come up. We ask that everybody abide by the rules so we can keep the program running on time. All right, we are going to begin, and in order to hear from someone first regarding their opening remarks, I am going to randomly select a person's name so we keep this as fair as possible. So, let's see here. These are a little slippery than last night. And Ms. Nelson, you will be going first with your opening remarks, so you will have 90 seconds for the same, and you can begin now.
Thank you. Good evening. Instead of using my 90 seconds to tell you more about my background or my career history or education, I'd invite you to check out my website. What I'd like to say is I'm here tonight because of people. The first people that brought me to the table as a candidate is my family. My husband and I have lived here for 15 years. We have three children, two at Prior Lake High School and one at Hidden Oaks Middle School. I also have three nieces and a nephew that are currently in the district. I'm also here because of the people that our family has interacted with for the past 12 years going through the district. Everything from the teachers who have nurtured our children's gifts and handled their challenges year in and year out, and helped them be the best they can be. The non-teaching staff, everybody from the front desk people who are the heroes in every school building you walk into, to the custodians who are the first people that sometimes greet our children or find the person sitting alone in the lunchroom and say hello. To our administrative team. Our district is thriving because of the staff we have right now leading our district, and that's an exciting thing for our community. Finally, I'm here for the people who are our students, all of our students, all of the learners. A board member takes an oath promising to make students the first and most important factor in all decision-making roles. I'm really excited to be here tonight as a champion for public education, and specifically as a champion for the Prior Lake Savage Area School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. And we will proceed clockwise, and so Mr. Peterson, I would ask you to offer your opening remarks, and you will have 90 seconds.
First and foremost, thank you. As a husband, father, and resident for more than 25 years, I believe that there's a strong education system that is vital to our kids' future. Our property values for supporting a solid community infrastructure and our community as a whole. Currently, our community education projections are based off of cohort analysis, which is incorrect, costly, and does not factor outside variables required for controlling costs while delivering education. The Prior Lake Savage School Board requires leadership by example, integrity, and understanding of education, finance, and perform demographic analysis. I have all this experience, as well as being a parent of a student in the district. Having earned a master's degree and undergraduate degree in engineering, experience of 35 years, experienced teaching STEM, firsthand international exposure with working with students in China, Thailand, and Australia, served time on additional boards, and which I understand their purpose, I am certified in statistics, I'm certified as a lead auditor for compliance, I hold certification in risk-based management, and I'm open and willing for acceptance of cultural diversification.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Pexa, your opening remarks, and you will have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Mark Pexa, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this forum this evening. My wife Jessica and I have two children. Our daughter is a first grader at Jeffers Pond, and our son will be starting kindergarten next year. I have a master's of science in information security and a bachelor's of science in telecommunications. I've devoted my career to work in the public sector and have experience working in education, local government, and have experience managing budgets with respect for taxpayer money. I enjoy serving the public because my work leads to improvements in infrastructure, health, safety, and everyone for the community. I believe board members must collaborate to provide our children with high-quality education and opportunities in safe environments, because that is the basis for success after graduation. Community engagement and responsiveness are essential for the board to achieve the best outcomes. We must instill community confidence by setting clear objectives and being open about wins, challenges, and opportunities the school district faces. We must encourage all ideas and viewpoints and create wonderful discussion around them and provide the best outcomes for our children with that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pexa. And Ms. Ruel, you will have 90 seconds for your opening remarks.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Stacy Ruel, and I'm a 19-year resident of Savage. And my husband Dave and I are proud parents of two daughters who are graduates of Prior Lake High School. My experience with the district began in 2000 when I was a kindergarten mom and my daughter went to school at Glendale. And I served in a number of roles in the PTC and became more involved District Ride when I was the chairperson of the 2007 and 2008 referendum campaigns. I ran for school board in 2010, and I have served in an executive role in seven of the last eight years on the school board. I'm running for a few reasons, and one of the first reasons is I'm a champion for public education for all our students. I've always believed in a desire to give back to a public school system that I received a great education with. I believe education is a commitment to our youth that we make that allow them to pursue their dreams. It's the great equaling ground for our society where every child, no matter where they come from, gets a quality public education. I believe our district's one of the top districts in the state, and I hope to continue to pursue that if elected. The mission of our district is that I believe is my role as a school board is to ensure that that happens. A district where we meet each student where they're at and they receive an excellent education. I also want to honor the commitment that the community made in November of 2017 with the passage of the referendum. Construction has begun and designs are taking place now for all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruel. And Mr. Velazquez, you will have 90 seconds for your opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Enrique Velazquez. I'm not originally from Prior Lake, but I am educated by Department of Defense schools and schools in southeast Georgia before I came up here and fell in love with a Prior Lake girl and have made this my home for the past 19 years. We have three children in the district, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at the elementary school levels. And my son is in the Early Childhood Special Education Program. The reason I'm running is I want to give back to this community that has given so much of its heart and soul to me and to our family over the years. When other opportunities came up to relocate, to take advantage of my success, we kept on asking the question and looking at the triple bottom line: financial, education, and then opportunities for all of our children. And the question kept coming back of, where should we be? And the answer was always, right here in Prior Lake. Right here in Prior Lake for all three of our children was the best place we could be. So I want to take my education, a master's in business in nonprofit management, a bachelor's in project management and finance, and my public service experience, and deliver right back to our community so that we can continue to drive excellence, continue to drive education and balance financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Mr. Welch, you will now have 90 seconds for your opening comments.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here tonight to address you all, and thank you for being here tonight to educate yourselves. I've been a resident of the Prior Lake Savage School District for the past 13 years. I'm running for the school board because I want the best. I want the best for my family, for my two young children who are attending the Prior Lake Savage Schools today. I want the best for my community, a community that I've grown to love very deeply over the last 13 years and that I want to see continue to succeed in the future. I am running so that these schools can continue to be some of the finest in the state. I'm running because we as a community need leadership who are passionate about education while being able to make thoughtful and informed decisions about matters that come before the board. We need leaders who will do the work to have the best possible understanding of the matters that come before the board, and to engage in thoughtful debate about those matters to understand and make resolutions. We need leaders that believe in our schools and want success for them, who recognize when we're doing great as well as when we come up short. That is what I promised to bring as a member of the Prior Lake Savage School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. And Mr. Drews, we will now offer you 90 seconds for your opening remarks.
Thank you, Kim, and thank you to the chamber for sponsoring the event, all of you who came out tonight and took time out of your lives to hear from a bunch of folks who want to be on your school board, and all of you listening online. I'm not sure if anybody's noticed, but we live in somewhat polarized times. Past couple of weeks have been a glaring example of the divisions in our country. There's one thing that still brings communities together. There's one thing that brought this community together a year ago, and that's education. That's our kids. That's the interest in the future of our students. Last year, this community passed $100 million referendum because it was the right thing for our kids. And we didn't just pass it by, you know, a slim margin. It was almost a two-to-one vote. Tell me something that gets people behind in today's political world with a two-to-one support margin. It makes me proud to be a member of this community. It makes me proud to have helped build support for the referendum, and I would be proud to continue to serve this community as a member of the school board. I ask you to listen thoughtfully to the things that my fellow candidates and I have to say tonight. Listen to who's talking about students and keeping kids at the forefront of their priorities, and then in November I would ask you to vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. And Mr. Ganfield, you will now have 90 seconds for your opening comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Ganfield. Thank you for having me. I was raised in the district, and I am a Prior Lake graduate. After high school, I enlisted in the Marine Corps, and I served with Military Police Company, Fourth Marines. I've been married for 24 years, and my wife and I have two sons who have also graduated from Prior Lake. My educational backgrounds includes three degrees, two of which are master's degrees. I have master's degrees in emergency management, and I have one in occupational health and safety. My bachelor's is homeland security. I am a subject matter expert in my field. Professionally, I oversee the Emergency Communications Center, Emergency Management and Health and Safety. So why is this important? Why should anybody care about my accolades? It's important because I will leverage my expertise to ensure our staff and students are safe and secure every day that they arrive to school. I will bring the one thing every parent in this district values the most: their kids' safety. It will be my priority to make this district the gold standard in safety and preparedness for other districts to emulate. This is my passion, and I will bring it here. So why else am I here? I will bring back integrity and accountability to our school board, which I believe is long gone, and I will expect no less from administration, consultants, and fellow board members. If elected, I will do my absolute best to ensure new boards' answers to the parents and residents of the district. I will also address issues of open enrollment, facilities, and curriculum. I will apply common sense to wants versus needs, and I will review security measures and point out our failures. A safe environment must come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganfield. And now, Mr. Quat, you will now have 90 seconds for your opening comments.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening. My name is Jason Quat, and I am thrilled to be here tonight to share with you my vision. The Prior Lake Savage Area School District is one of the finest in the Twin Cities metro area. The new goal must be for it to mature into one of the finest in Minnesota, if not the nation. We must strive to become a beacon of academic excellence, artistic exploration, and athletic performance. As a board member, I will challenge our students, our teachers, our parents, and our district administration to make bold choices, to exceed our expectations about what public education can achieve for society if given the opportunity, respect, and funding it deserves. I will endeavor to set a proactive, progressive agenda that focuses on eliminating inequality, promoting inclusiveness and diversity, and establishing modern classroom environments that are nurturing and supportive of all students and staff. I will encourage not only our students, but all residents, to learn the importance of empathy, compassion, and finding their place in this often harsh and unforgiving global village we share. I promise to give the students of this district every opportunity for an unlimited future, and I pledge to the residents of this district: honest, passionate, and common sense-based governments over our most precious resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quat. Mr. Mandel, you will now have 90 seconds for your opening comments.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to this forum. I am excited to be here. My name is RJ Mandel. I am a resident of Savage. I've been living there for the last 10 years. I have three kids, nine, seven, and five, and they all go to Glendale Elementary. I am also married. My wife is an IT manager at Thomson Reuters, one of the largest publishing houses. My academic background, I have double masters, including an MBA from Michigan State University in technology and supply chain management. In terms of my professional background, I have a finance and technology background. I have worked with large companies, US Bank and Wells Fargo, for eight years, and now I'm a successful entrepreneur running my own consulting business for the last 10 years, and my office is in Savage as well. I also volunteer as a soccer coach for a Prior Lake Soccer Club, and I'm also part of DOCS, which is a dad of Glendale organization. Why I'm running for school district? I'm running for school district because I'm scared about my kids' safety and security at the schools. With all the things happening around the country, there's not much enough attention to kids' safety and security today. I'm running for the school board because the academic performance of our district is going down year over year, and as you go to the higher grade, it gets even worse. I'm running for the school district because there's no minority participation in the school district. Every fifth kid in the school district is a minority today, and I believe that there should be a voice for minority on the school district as well. I'm also running for the school district because there's too much, a high percentage of open enrollment.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Thank you all for your opening remarks, and we are going to move on to the question part of the forum, and I am going to ask the first question by randomly selecting another name. Who will go first? Ms. Nelson, your name did not get put back in the box, so you don't have to worry about that. I saw her eyes go, "Oh, great." All right, the lucky person is Mr. Velazquez. Question number one, you will all have 90 seconds for an answer, and I will repeat each question. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in this district? And you have 90 seconds.
Thank you for the question and for the opportunity to speak first. As Mr. Ganfield spoke to earlier in his opening remarks, the primary focus of every single parent is to send their child off to school and to make sure they actually come home every single day whole. So, safety and security is of paramount importance. Education, while they're in the safe environment... pardon me, excuse me, must also take priority in that safe environment. But we're not a rich community. We don't have significant businesses. We don't have large organizations here that are able to contribute to the funding strategies here. It primarily falls down to our residents and tax base. So we need to balance that significantly and take careful precautions to make sure that we're able to look at what exactly it is that we need to educate them on within our curriculum, what measures do we need to take security-wise, whether it's having a security presence, whether it's monitors or other apparatus. But we need to be fiscally responsible as well.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Mr. Welch, question number one: As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in this district?
Thank you. In today's world, a lot of focus is based upon the external threats to our schools. Those are the ones that get in the news, those are the ones that we all fear for our children these days. Well, a lot of the concerns about child safety have to start within the schools. Matters of bullying and physical confrontations within the school are far more likely, although less recognized, as threatening child's safety than the big events that impact our news cycles. So, making sure that safety is baked into everything we do as a school, into the training that we give our teachers, into the thoughts of how we build out new facilities as the time comes or when we do renovations, can help us avoid having to take large incremental costs from creating entirely new structures for safety. We do have a very significant obligation in terms of making sure that we are being fiscally responsible. Our voters determine what our tax base is going to be, what the funding level is going to be for the schools, and we have to comply with that and do the best within those means. So I think just making sure that we are considering safety on everything that we are doing within the schools will help get us the incremental gains that are going to make sure that we have that safe environment for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Mr. Drews, question number one: As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in this district? And you will have 90 seconds.
If you have children in this district and they go to school, this is important to you. This is pretty much at the top of the list, okay? We all know that. And I think as a district, I think we're making progress. If I could have a show of hands from the audience, anybody been into a building during the school day this year and was it different this year than it was last year? We're taking steps. The referendum projects will create different configurations for getting in and out of the buildings during the school day. I think those things are being done wisely, and I think they're being done responsibly with regard to tax dollars, thanks to our current board members. I also think that we need to make a priority to work on some of the soft security measures. And the soft security measures are making sure that our students feel valued and feel welcomed and have a connection to somebody in the building. That happens in Minnesota. One of our great weaknesses in our great education system is we don't have enough counselors. We don't have social workers in the building. We need to try to find a way to do more. We need to try to find a way to make sure our students have a connection so that there's fewer disaffected students who could potentially take these measures and take these actions. We do that by being responsible and balancing and making a list of priorities, just like a household does, and deciding what we can afford and how to do it. Thank you.
Like I stated, I'm a subject matter expert in safety, and I believe that we would have to start with core competency. And I believe we are severely lacking in our security measures for the district. Just going on the website, you know, something as simple as that, any one of the parents can click on it, can go to the website and try to find anything we have on security and safety for our district, and it doesn't exist. You have to really, really dig. We need to train our teachers in what to look for, and you know, start there. What is safety? What does it mean to them? How do we be proactive? Be reactive, you know, not so much reactive, I'm sorry, and more proactive. You know, we need things like vehicle barriers out in front of our schools. We don't have them. Target has vehicle barriers. It's the small things that we can do that don't cost a lot of money to keep our kids safe that need to be done, and they need to be done soon before something happens. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganfield. And Mr. Quat, you now have 90 seconds for question number one: As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district?
I want to begin by echoing what Mr. Welch had said, and that is that we want to be careful not to get tunnel vision and focus so much on these high-cost, you know, high-profile mass casualty events, that we put all of our resources, all of our funding into preventing things of that nature, when in fact, it is, we have to make sure that everyday safety issues like bullying, assault, simple assault, or aggravated assault, sexual harassment, and theft, those more minor items are dealt with. Those can be dealt with much more inexpensively. The other thing that we can do that doesn't really cost a dime is we can build a positive school environment that establishes relationships based on trust, respect, kindness, and compassion amongst students and their faculty. We must encourage the sharing of information about threatening behavior before incidents occur. Again, these are very inexpensive steps that we can take. And then as far as the funding, we do need to increase that funding, and how we do that is we push our community to be advocates for public education on a national level, on a state level, because we can always spend what we have. I mean, I am very, very aware of that. So we have to then increase the pot, and we do that by increasing funding from the federal government, from the state government, and...
and by referendum and levies as we have had in the past few years. So, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quat. And Mr. Mandel, you will now have 90 seconds. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district?
Well, I think, oh, sorry, safety is paramount. And in today's environment, with so many things are happening around the country, I think we should bake the safety into any project, infrastructure project that comes through. I think it's very important. If God forbid, anything happens in a school district, not only it'll affect the citizens, but also the tax collection, collection and the reputation of the district as well. So I think security is paramount, considering the environment we live in today. And technology is very cheap, so you don't have to spend too much money on technology. For example, if you have a security system in your home, it counts, counts probably like $25 per month, right, to secure a house, having a camera. So, security is very cheap nowadays, and technology is also very cheap. You can also build, you know, cameras, you can have fences and stuff to protect the school perimeter and prevent things from happening. You can also have software that you can use to proactively monitor people's behavior and kids' behavior and, you know, apply resources where they need for education, maybe extra training, maybe counseling or something else. So there are different technologies available that's very cheap to implement safety and security measures in the schools. It's just the willpower, and it's also the, you know, it also has to come from the people, citizens of the community. They should demand security for the schools, for the kids, especially parents who have kids in the school district nowadays, today.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. And Ms. Nelson, you will now have 90 seconds. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district?
That's a lot for 90 seconds. I would start with looking at the issues of security. I've been digging into it a little bit, and I would echo what several of my colleagues here have said. You have to think about security in different ways. The research will show you that the chance of any of our students being hurt or killed by an outside intruder are minuscule compared to the chance that they will be beat up in school, or caught under a stairway, or suffer from bullying. That doesn't mean we shouldn't look at keeping intruders out, and we are addressing that as a district so far. I've been pleased to see the, the recent improvements, introducing the Raptor Center or Raptor System, where you use your identification to get into the school, and they can do an instant background check. Looking at different ways to do lockdowns if there's a security breach, they're now looking at ways to do lockdowns with options, so that students and teachers can make better decisions. And they are making our entrances more secure, and the referendum is also addressing any remodeling there. We do need to pay attention to the mental health issues, to the counseling ratio. Minnesota struggles in its counselor-to-student ratio, and so does our district. We need to look for ways to model for the students. Fiscal responsibility, as a district, we are very fiscally responsible, and I just attended the meeting and heard our audit report. What we have to do in terms of working with our accountability with the members in our district and our community is to communicate openly with them, to express what the needs are, to keep our students safe, and to engage them in the decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Peterson, question number one for you. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district? And you too will have 90 seconds.
Excellent question. I was recently at an LAC meeting, which this was a key point, bullying, mental health, mental awareness, a desperate need by our children to be understood. Monday night, I was at a school board meeting in which it was proposed that we would have additional counselors. That proposal was ignored. I repeat, ignored. Funding, interesting question. Funding, everybody has a limited budget. I think it's time that we look inward to understand where our money in our community is being spent, how it is being spent, to what degree it is being spent, and on what and by who. Technology, excellent point. I'm an engineer with six, or six patents in technology and security, and I will tell you straight up that it is becoming cheaper, it is becoming more available, it is becoming more productive. It is something that we need to do. Training of teachers, absolutely. Training of the right nature, training of the right degree. Accountability, we need accountability by our school board for this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Pexa, question number one. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district? You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Last year, I had a student who first started attending kindergarten. And as a parent, I had a new experience entering our elementary school. I was blown away by the lack of security that was currently in place at the elementary school. We were able to walk in to the door, sign our name, grab a sticker, and have access into the building. The latter half, since January of this last year, I was very outspoken and advocated very heavily for a visitor management system. We needed to secure our front entrances. We needed to catch up to what other districts were doing. Lakeville, Shakpe, Eastern Carver County Schools, all had visitor management systems years ago. Why had we not looked at this at that time? Why were we behind? We can't be behind on student safety. Student safety is paramount and number one on my agenda. Now, in talking of student safety, we do have to balance that. We do have to balance that with fiscal responsibility and accountability. Mr. Quat's point, you know, I do really agree that teaching compassion, respect, and tolerance helps with bullying and helps address, addresses some of those issues. And having a student who recently attended kindergarten, who now is attending first grade, I can tell you firsthand that teachers and staff are really hitting that home and really taking and making sure students respect each other. And I apologize, I went over a little bit, but thank you for allowing me to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Pexa. Ms. Ruel, question number one. As a school board member, how do you balance issues of child safety, fiscal responsibility, and accountability to the taxpayers in the district?
I think this is a great question. And the work that we've been doing this last summer and spring has really been a recognition of some results that we got in the survey. And I think, you know, we're at a new level here with, with student safety as it pertains to the outside borders. And I, I would agree, we're playing a little catch-up as far as some of the Raptor Systems, but those things are in place now. I think we need to ensure our schools are safe from both hard threats and soft threats. Being said, hard threats are more or less the outside physical buildings. And we work with the city of Prior Lake, the city of Savage Police Departments, Scott County Emergency Management System, Services, on a regular basis to go over safety policies and procedures. And we continue to do that on a regular basis. The district is currently implementing, and I think Michael Nelson talked about this, a new lockdown with options, that these, this is the newest kind of recommendation coming forward for, on really a national level, where students are taught signs to run, hide, or fight. And it's really important that we start to implement this. Our staffs are being trained on this now, and it's going to be something that's going to be rolled out on an age-appropriate level going forward this year. I also think from the standpoint of funding, this is something on a state level that we need to address. There isn't enough funding.
Thank you, Ms. Ruel. And thank you to all of our candidates for their thoughtful responses to question one. And we are going to move on to question two, and I'm going to select the lucky person who gets to go first. Mr. Gannfield, question number two. You will have 90 seconds to respond. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students?
Let me just make sure I understood that correctly. I disagree with a teacher and the general public?
It could be a school official, so it could be a...
A school official and the, and the general public, I would disagree?
Or.
Or. In that case, I, I understand that I'm not going to agree with everybody on everything, and nobody's, not everybody's going to agree with me on everything. And that's why there's a board. And you know, when instances like that happen, you know, I can bring my concerns and discuss what I feel, how I feel, and my thoughts, my considerations to whatever the issue is. And, you know, at the end of the day, whether I agree or disagree, the board majority decides, you know, a personal disagreement between myself or another, or a teacher, or that's, that's, that's a personal thing, you know, unless it makes it to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gannfield. Mr. Quat, question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students?
Well, above all else, I would speak my conscience. I would not, I don't, I'm not a big believer in the rule by consensus. I believe that's a great idea, you know, in theory, but I think our nation right now is so divided that that's going to be really difficult to come to for a long time. So in that environment, we have to do what we believe is right, and we have to say what we believe is right, even if it, you know, flies in the face of what you might think is normal or civil to do. You have to stand up for what you believe in. If you're in the minority, and you know, the larger group wants to move in one direction, and you feel that that direction is unequivocally dangerous or damaging to students or to the community, you owe it to yourself, you owe it to your family, you owe it to everyone to say what you want. And you can do that respectfully, but still be aggressive. You can do that on social media, you can do that through personal communication, you can do that through email, but you really have to stick to your guns. It doesn't matter who it is, whether it's the superintendent, whether it's a parent, whether it's a principal, whether it's a senior in high school, you have to speak your mind and what you believe. You cannot, I'm not going to follow along blindly because that's the rule, or you know, that's the policy. I'm going to use my mind, my common sense, and do what's right.
Thank you, Mr. Quat. Mr. Mandel, question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? And you will have 90 seconds.
Well, so I am a person of data, so I rely on data and facts. So I'll do my research and figure out what happened in something similar situation in the, in a, in a similar environment. I'll put together all the data and the facts, I'll present it to the people concerned, and I'll try to bring some consensus, because I'm a person who works with consensus. I don't like going after people. I try to bring everybody together and make things happen in life. And that's what I've done in my business as well, and that's what I do. I rely on data, bring, present my case, present it, and have everybody come together and solve an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Ms. Nelson, question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? 90 seconds.
Thank you. First, I'm starting to realize that once you become a board member, you are a board member 24 hours a day. You are always representing the district. So you have to be very careful how you show up on social media or how you show up in public. And if I had a disagreement with somebody, whether it's in the general public or an administrator in a school, the, the helpful thing is there are protocols in place for school board members. There's governance set up that you agree to when you join the board, and there is sort of a hierarchy of where you take those concerns. I would be one of seven board members if I served, and as an individual, I would have no authority. We only have authority when we're in quorum together. So I can't go to a building principal and say, "You need to change this." That's just not the role of a school board member. In terms of keeping all of those students at the forefront, you have to remember too that when you have debates on social media, or you go in and you discourage, you're discouraging about a principal, that you're, you're impacting the students as well. Decisions do have to take into consideration all of our learners, all of their backgrounds, all of their academic needs. But we have to function as a team. Once a board member, always a board member. No individual authority. You can research, you can learn, you can bring your data together and have great discussions with your team and make decisions moving forward. I might go to the superintendent or the chair of the board, but I would have to follow that hierarchy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Peterson, question number two for you. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all the students? 90 seconds.
First of all, I would listen very carefully to the community. I would listen as the elected board director that you are asking me to become, and I would never forget who I represent and what that representation is comprised of. As was just recently spoke to, statistics, which is something I am certified in, to understand ramifications and how and best to use good judgment. And one of the other things I'd like to bring up here is that one of the discussion points that is heavily overly exercised in our, in our school board is Act 203, 204. I want to make sure that we don't argue amongst ourselves, that we work as a solid team, a solid team to deliver the best results of education and safety to our children, and make sure that the disagreements are well-understood, acted upon, and delivered with appropriate answers on a timely basis.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Pexa, question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? 90 seconds.
Sure, thank you. You know, I agree with Mr. Peterson. Listening has to come first. You are representing the community, you are representing the district, you're representing staff, teachers, everyone involved in educating children. You have to listen to their opinions. Just because I have a different opinion doesn't mean I'm always right. By listening, I can adapt my opinion, I can change it, I can maybe see things that I wasn't looking at originally, and I can change how I feel and be able to speak that way. You know, when it comes to communicating on the board, I think having people with different opinions and different ideas is healthy. I think that's a wonderful thing because it establishes good communication and good discussion amongst my fellow board members. Having that discussion really benefits the outcomes for the students and the staff involved in the decision. We have to be able to communicate as a board, and we have to make sure we break down any communication barriers that either exist or exist in the future. And we have to, with utmost importance, make sure when we are making decisions, that we are making decisions with the best interest of the students and putting the students' needs first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pexa. Ms. Ruel, 90 seconds to answer question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the children's best interest?
Okay, I think the first thing I would do is I, if I disagreed with an official, is to contact the superintendent. The superintendent is the one employee that the board hires and manages. We don't manage anyone else. It's the one person that is solely responsible, that we're responsible for. The management of the schools is what the superintendent is responsible for. And I do think that there's a little bit of a misconception about really what is the role of a school board member. And I would encourage the public to look on our website, under this, about us, under the school board. It's listed under there. It comes from the Minnesota School Board Association, which every single district in the state is a member of, and it explains exactly what our role is. And our role is not day-to-day management, our role is vision and mission. And as a board, we are seven individuals who will debate and have debated, and have done a good job doing debate, and then we make a decision. And that decision is final, and we move forward as one. And we, I, we're very different individuals on the board, and I think we've done a good job as a board, is moving forward as one. Everyone gets heard in a respectful manner, and it's something that we need to do to make sure that we're representing all the stakeholders, which is important. So, to get back to the question, I mean, I, I think the first thing I would do is talk So to get back to the question, I mean, I think the first thing I would do is talk to the superintendent about the issue that I'm having, and talk about what process, what process was followed to make the decision, what stakeholder involvement was involved in making the decision. What was the communication?
Thank you, Ms. Ruel. It's okay. Mr. Velasquez, question number two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? 90 seconds.
Thank you. The first thing I would do is evaluate, am I approaching this school official as a parent of a student, or am I in an official capacity as a school board member? If, that's my primary litmus test. If it's as a parent of a student, then we would address the situation, separate professional from personal, and figure out what the underlying situation is. And provided that it is an issue that relates only to my child or my personal situation, it ends right there. There's nothing that I would do to carry that instance forward to the superintendent or to the board level. Now, on the opposite side of the equation, if it turns out that is, I'm being presented this in a school board capacity, then I would echo the sentiments of Ms. Ruel and elevate that to the superintendent. But I would also be very transparent with that school official, that this is the action that I'm planning to take, so that the school, the superintendent, who is the one employee that the board oversees, has visibility, has knowledge of what's going on, what the issue is. If it does elevate to the school board discussing it at a much broader level, then debate ensues, I might reign victorious in whatever the debate is, I might be the lone dissenter. Whatever the outcome is, we move forward together as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velasquez. Mr. Welch, as a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? And you will have 90 seconds.
So resuming for folks online that couldn't hear me. The role of the school board, as I see it, is one of governance. Governance is the act of building consensus. The idea that there is only one right way is a defining feature of the failures that we are seeing in governance today. Governance is a long-term process. A decision made today, a disagreement today, is the starting point to work forward. Continued learning and advocacy and discussion may result in changed ideas down the road. You have to have trust with your community, with your colleagues, with the people in the district. That trust enables communication and understanding, so that you are able to learn from each other, and you might find that the ideas you have today, or that the ideas that they have today are not the ideas that they have in the future, as you are able to learn from each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. And Mr. Drews, to wrap up question two. As a school board member, how would you handle a situation in which you personally disagreed with a school official or with members of the public while also adhering to the policy of making decisions in the best interest of all students? And you will have 90 seconds.
Enrique touched on this. I think it's important to remember the distinction of what happens when you get elected and begin to serve on the school board. Because as a parent, we're all human, and we'd all have the same reaction, which is maybe think about firing off a nasty email, or perhaps jumping on Concerned Citizens of Prior Lake and voicing our displeasure with something. Okay? The minute you become elected to a school board, guess what? You have bigger responsibilities to the district and to all of the students. And your role, as has been stated earlier, an individual board member carries no authority, cannot change anything. Board members work as a unit, and board members communicate to the administration and to the superintendent. So whether it's a community member or a district official, that's where it should start. If I'm approached by a community member, which I have been before, somebody who has a concern, I think what you need to do, first and foremost, is stop and listen. Take a moment, hear what somebody has to say, even if you disagree. Attempt to show some empathy, understand, put yourself in that person's situation, and understand what their concern is. And then tell them, "I will refer this to the people that is appropriate to be handling it," and we'll start with the board chair and the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Drews, and thank you to all of you for your answers to question two, and we are going to move on to question three, and I'm going to select, if I can. Mr. Mandel, you will start first with question number three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you will have 90 seconds.
I think as a school district, we have a very high percentage of open enrollment. According to the Department of Education, the average open enrollment is around 9%. And in our district, it's around 12%. So there's 1,021 students are open enrolling in our district, which is substantially high. So what happens is like residents of, we get some certain money from the state to fund the students' education, and rest of it comes from the state taxes and local taxes from the residents of this district. So as a result, this residents of Savage and Prior Lake District end up paying a higher percentage of money and subsidizing the education of kids from the outside the school district. I am not against open enrollment. What I am against is our unnecessary financial burden on the residents of our school district. So I think we need to take a pause, see where we are in terms of our financial commitments, in terms of our capacity, you know, to sustain open enrollment. And based on that, we should make a judgment, like what's important for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Ms. Nelson, question three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you will have 90 seconds.
Thank you. I think open enrollment might be one of the most misunderstood concepts that gets talked about in the community. Open enrollment, first of all, is there's a certain percentage required by the state of Minnesota. Secondly, open enrollment works both ways. We lose students through regular attrition and through opening, open enrolling into other districts. That leaves a gap of funding that we don't get when that happens. When students open enroll into our district, additional funding comes back into our district with that, with those students. That does not become a financial burden on us. This year, in fact, we didn't get to our full capacity of open enrollment, because I believe there was a perception that it was going to be hard to get in, and families had to make commitments outside of our district. And we still had a little room of students that we could have taken in. One thing that I've done to try and understand the financial impact and why it plays such an important role is I've gone into our business office at the district several times and said, "Help me understand open enrollment," and looked at the numbers, and seen how it balances out. Open enrollment is important to the success of our schools. When we look at other districts, districts who are losing students out that side of open enrollment are struggling. I also studied an area district during the referendum who decided to close open enrollment, or at least limit it to what they could limit it to. Financially, they struggled and ended up cutting out programs and cutting out teachers. So we have to be really careful. And also with open enrollment, we don't want to start talking in terms of them and us. Everybody's our student.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Peterson, question number three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to other districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
Good question. Currently, there's 1,020 open enrolled students in our, in our community. The new elementary school that is about to be built could not be supported without open enrollment. Take into consideration that, and at the same time, take into consideration that at 33%, your population is 55 years and older. What does that mean? What it means is that if you blend those two together, using cohort analysis, which is what your school was built on, your current one, and you assume linearity in terms of projectionary growth, you cannot support it. You cannot support it as a community. You cannot support it in terms of growth and factors. Then you take into consideration cyclic, cyclic conditions. There is not a linearity to growth within your classrooms. You have to understand that there are factors outside of what is being considered that will affect it, including the economy. If you didn't see the news yesterday, take a look at it. You need to consider those factors.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Pexa, question three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe that any policy changes are needed? And you will have 90 seconds.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is, because so many students want to open enroll to our district, I think it really is a testament to our great teachers, strong school system, and wonderful programs that this district has to offer. I mean, we really should be proud of that. We really should. With that being said, we do have a space issue currently within our school district. Our schools, until buildings are either built or expanded upon, are tight and overcrowded. And we've, we've cut other areas within the school, such as cafeteria space, arts areas, gym areas, to try to fit some classrooms in and try to accommodate our growth. And I think we, we could have potentially curved that a little bit, at least temporarily, to address the area of space, and to make sure that we were accurately using our space and not overcrowding our current students, and not overtaxing our teachers, and making sure each student has the resources that they need within the school system. I watched a candidate forum last night from Edina from 2017, and they had a wonderful discussion on this. And all of the candidates supported open enrollment, but they supported it to an extent. We have to make sure we balance the financials and the, the space that we have. There has to be a point where they intersect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pexa. Ms. Ruel, question three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding communities, and do you believe any policy changes are needed?
Great question. And I would agree with Mark. You know, I think it's a balance, and it has been a balance, and that's what we've used as a board for a number of years. I think, you know, you're able to do a lot of things with open enrollment, close at only specific sites. We've had Redtail Ridge closed for four or five years. The high school's been closed for a number of years, longer than that even. There's things you can do to manage growth. We do have, up until five years ago, we were a loser in this. We had more kids leaving. Currently, I'm just looking at the audit right now, we have 1,034 kids, it says in 2018, that are open enrolled in, but we also have 692 going out. And that doesn't include any of our private schools. That's not private school kids, because they don't, they have no funding from the state, so they're not tracked in this. So I think people just really need to understand that we've limited it. It's been, and like Michael said, we still have openings today. I mean, it's, 9th and 11th grade are the only two grades that are currently closed. There's still five spots available at kindergarten. And what has happened with open enrollment over the years is people, a lot of times, come as open enrolled, and they move into the district, because they like where they're at and where, and where the schools are at. So I do think we're going to need to continue to limit, obviously until our space constraints are relieved, but it is a mechanism that we use to have steady funding, and you want to be a gainer in, in open enrollment. You want to be a sought-after district.
Thank you, Ms. Ruel. Mr. Velasquez, question three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. I agree that open enrollment and just population growth in general is very cyclical. There's no hard and fast formula that can predict exactly how many spaces we will have, because there are environmental factors, there are other school districts that are making adjustments to their operating levies and operating budgets as well, that create additional opportunities. Just in the past couple of years, we've seen a growth of special education X flux to other school districts such as Minnetoka, Edina, and Burnsville, because they've invested a bit more heavily than, than we have in those specific areas, which creates space for our special education teachers who also need to continue to, to work in. If we don't have those resources here, then that will continue. If you need evidence of that, we can look at Minneapolis, where we are currently seeing school districts such as Minnetoka, again, Edina, St. Paul, St. Louis Park, busing kids out of Minneapolis to, to educate those children. And it's just creates a cycle of, an exit of students, exit of finances, which is an increased burden, and it stifles the, the growth of the community. So we need to balance each one of these different factors for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velasquez. Mr. Welch, question three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding communities, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
As Ms. Rwell mentioned previously, the district has seen in recent years a shift from being a net negative in open enrollment towards being a net positive. This does indicate a lot of positive things for the district in terms of it being a desirable location for people to bring their kids to, so in terms of kind of a measure of health for the district, that's a wonderful thing. I think it is important that as we make plans and policies for the district, that we are thinking towards educating the, the needs of the district, and not necessarily considering ourselves as trying to prepare for, you know, being a destination district, but making sure that we're just making, handling the needs we have here, and open enrollment being something that is useful for kind of smoothing out those hills and valleys that you see with students coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Mr. Drews, historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
Thanks, Kim. Open enrollment is Minnesota's version of school choice. If you are a fan of school choice for students, then you should be a fan of open enrollment. The way that that has affected the district, our district, in the past, as we said, historically, we were net losers. More people left than came. As a result of having effective leadership from a number of different school boards and from some good administration and fantastic staff and teachers, that trend has reversed, and for the past five years, we've had more come than leave. I don't know about you, if I have a choice of a school district that is attractive or one that people want to leave, I want our community to have one where people are coming. They're also moving in for that reason. Open enrollment is a tool. It is a tool for administration and the school board to utilize to make sure that our facilities and our resources are being used the most responsibly, responsible way that they can be. And on an ongoing basis, that policy should be reviewed. Should the policy be different next year? Should the policy be changed again the year after that? Let's see what happens. It's utilized as a tool to benefit our resident students, because sometimes it helps us to be able to hire another teacher, to have a smaller classroom size in one building, because we can put a few more kids in there. Open enrollment is a good thing for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Gannfield, question number three. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts, and do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
Historically, most recently, it's added to our student body population, and that was, and student population was the whole premise for the recent referendum. And, you know, there was plenty of yeses and plenty of nos, and the, a lot of the people on the no side was, "How are you going to justify asking all this money when we're going to bring, bringing people in, kids in from outside the district?" And that was, became a real hot-button issue for, and the main issue. You know, the spirit of open enrollment was... You know, the spirit of open enrollment was the state, was a, was a concept by the state to, to help those districts that were losing students. And our, our growth rate is 250 students a year, and it's going to keep growing. We're a growing community. And, and as far as policy, policy would, for each individual year, will, will have to be reviewed by the board because growth rate this year might be different from next year, different from the next year, based on the, on our housing in Prior Lake. And because there's no question, we're growing at unprecedented rate.
Thank you, Mr. Ganfield. And to wrap up, question number three. Mr. Quat. Historically, how has open enrollment affected the district schools, perhaps in comparison to surrounding districts? And do you believe any policy changes are needed? And you have 90 seconds.
Thanks, Kim. Open enrollment, as many of, of the, of my distinguished colleagues here have said, is a good thing for our district if managed properly, and it has been. You know, a few years ago, we locked it down to the barest minimum that was allowed by law because that was, was necessary. The following year, there was some space open in kindergarten in Glendale, for example. So they let, you know, a group in. They were flexible. People looked at the situation, they made adjustments appropriately. So that, that's the key, is flexibility moving forward. Every year is going to be different. There are going to be some years where there might be 100 kids that want to come in. There might be another year where only 20 come in. We have to be flexible. The other thing, we have to be very careful, and this has gotten ugly in the last few years, is viewing open enrollees and their families as outsiders, as the enemy, and that is the farthest thing from the truth. Many open enrollees have siblings in our district. They are the children of teachers in our district. They are the children of people that work in our district, that bring economic growth. These are people we want here. These are not, you know, undesirables that we're trying to keep out, that are trying to come in and take our resources, take our, you know, our space. That is just not what's happening. So, you know, the groups that are trying to portray open enrollees in that light just need to course correct there a little bit. Open enrollment is a good thing when managed properly. We're doing just fine at that.
Thank you, Mr. Quat, and thank you all of you to your responses for question number three. And we are going to shift to the part of the forum in which we hear from all of you with your closing remarks, why, why the viewers and why the people sitting here should vote for you come November 6th. And I'm going to draw a name to select to see who's going to go first. Mr. Welch, we will start with you, and you will have 90 seconds. And certainly, if you have any rebuttals, you can use this time to do so.
Thank you. Remember to turn my mic on that time. Getting good at this. We've got a great district here. The Prior Lake Savage schools are some of the best in the state, and I can't tell you how excited I am at the opportunity to be a bigger part of that. It's important to me as a resident and to me as a parent. I believe that providing a solid education for our community's children is one of the finest missions I can hope to be a part of. To ensure that we're able to do that, not only for today's children, but for tomorrow's children, we have to make sure that we are governing our district in a way that sets it up for long-term success. As an adult, we occasionally find wisdom in the stories of our kids. For instance, Goldilocks and the Three Bears. From Goldilocks, we were able to learn the importance of getting it just right, not too hot, not too cold. And so it is with many things in life, including serving on our school board. It's important as a board member that you appreciate and support the district and the administration that runs it. It is essentially the job of the board, after all, to be good caretakers for the district. However, as a board member, it is also your duty to challenge, to question, and correct in a thoughtful fashion as the need arises, to ensure that goals are met, budgets are followed, and that we leave this district as good as, if not better than the way we got it. The balance between the two, through considerate leadership and measured thought, are what I will offer to keep Prior Lake Savage schools successful for today and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. And Mr. Drews, you will have 90 seconds for your closing comments.
Two years ago at this event, I started my closing statement by trying to make a joke. Epic fail, as the kids would say these days, so we're going to skip that. But I am going to revisit a little bit of that statement. I said that I had 8,313 reasons why I was running for a position on our school board. Today, I have 8,796 reasons. It's another 500 students, just like clockwork, 250 more, year after year. Next year, probably 9,000. And every one of those students, every family that chooses to make Prior Lake and Savage their home and make District 719 their home deserves to receive the same exceptional education that my children received in our schools. Lindy and Jordan Schmitz moved next door to me a couple of years ago. Their son Max is three. Their beautiful little daughter Lennon is a, you know, 20-pound little baby bundle of joy. I want them to have that same experience. I want the rest of this community's children, all the kids, the 40 kids that get on the bus stop in my neighborhood to go to Redtail every morning, to have the same education experience that my children had. I believe in public education. I believe it's the strongest force for good in our country. We came together as a community because our kids and our public education are an important value to this community. I asked for your vote on November 6th because I believe together we can continue to build a bright future for Prior Lake Savage area schools.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Ganfield, you will have 90 seconds for your closing comments.
Probably won't use all 90 seconds. Well, thank everybody for coming out. I've had basically a life, lifetime of serving, and this is another way for me to serve the community. Like I said, my, my priorities are going to be the security, educating our children, sound for financial management. If elected, I want to make sure things like gentleman's agreements never happen again because that, that affected the perception of the board and, and confidence in the board. So things like that can, should never happen again and will not if I'm elected. I will vet all of our contracts and have transparency with the public. I want everybody to know what's going on and how we're doing it, I believe, in full disclosure. I will listen, I will ask questions, and I will apply common sense to guide our district to operate within its means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganfield. And Mr. Quat, you will have your 90 seconds for your closing comments.
Thank you to the chamber and to the residents of Prior Lake and Savage for the opportunity to speak here this evening. In 2017, we came together to pass a successful referendum that solved our immediate enrollment crisis. It is now time to move beyond past disagreements and guide this district into the future. This board needs visionaries that are not afraid to think creatively and proactively. We need strategic thinkers and empathetic leaders that are prepared to address the issues that arise in a district that is growing in size and changing demographically as quickly as this one. We live in challenging times where public education is under relentless attack on a local, state, and national level. I will work with our underpaid and underappreciated teachers to shield students from the harmful effects of these assaults and fight alongside administrators to defend our schools against forces that would reduce the financial resources necessary to nourish this growing district. I will work with this community to ensure our children have the modern facilities, small class sizes, physical safety, and emotional support they need to grow as leaders, athletes, artists, and human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quat. Mr. Mondal, you have 90 seconds for your closing comments. Can you use a microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to this forum and presenting my views to the audience. When I was 10 years old, my father passed away, and we were financially broke. I worked hard throughout my school, and I got scholarship in my school as well as in my college. And I'm here today because of education. I firmly believe a good education is the only guaranteed path to success in life. I also grew up in an environment where school, kids' safety and security in the school was assured. It was taken for granted. I have three small kids in my, in the school district today, in the elementary school. I promise, if I get elected, I will not only fight for my kid, but for every child in this school district. I also want to assure all the community members that I'll use my financial expertise and my background to ensure that every penny from the taxpayer is accounted for and goes to the right place where it should go. Again, thank you for your time, and I look for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Mondal. And Ms. Nelson, your closing comments, and you will also have 90 seconds.
Thank you. I'll end where I began today. I'm here because of people. We are not a school district of issues. We are a school district and a community of people. There will always be concerns in every school district, but they can't be solved by sitting behind a computer screen and complaining on social media or writing letters to the editor. It involves rolling up your sleeves, talking to the people involved, and learning. There's a South African concept called Ubuntu. And basically, what that means is we are who we are through our experience of other people. We are all connected, and that has to be a guiding force in the way we work together in our community for the good of our district. It can be reassuring to hear some people come and say, if you elect me, I've got all the answers and I'll fix all your problems. I understand the safety in that. That's not the candidate you'll get in me. I don't have all of the answers, but I can guarantee I will roll up my sleeves and I will talk to people, and I will learn and bring the best information forward that I can. I understand the role of the school board. I've studied it. A school board does not manage. A school board governs, and it hires its superintendent, and that superintendent then puts people in place. A school board serves. It serves by setting the direction of the district through its mission. It serves by hiring a superintendent who works to fulfill the mission by putting effective staff and policies in place. It serves by engaging stakeholders. And most importantly, a school board exists to serve its students, to serve all of its students. This is a really exciting time to be in the Prior Lake Savage area school district, and I would love to be one of the people who can serve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. And Mr. Peterson, 90 seconds for your closing comments.
First of all, we're Lakers. Strong advocate for education, sports, arts, music, and STEM. I personally believe in promotion of open and thorough discussions in the public to highlight key issues that the public needs to have a voice on. The administration needs to receive open, direct, and relevant feedback on issues that affect their community and kids with the huge factors of growth complexity, specific infrastructural variance factors, and transitional movement in the community. It is key to understand and use demographic analysis appropriately, make appropriate analytical projections that affect our community and our educational system, and effectively control costs within our community. To be effective, school board members must have and be able to utilize advanced skillsets of projection, or project management, use solid project definitions, contract management, accounting principles, and time-based management tools. I will propose review and rewrite or negating third-party contracts and policies, procedures, and define required project metrics and validations that will track and aid in the development while, or controlling costs. I will improve project awareness, time scale progression, and focus intent regarding our education system and improvements. Most important, communication and acceptance by school board members must carry responsibility and transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Must be made.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Mr. Pexa, you will have 90 seconds for your closing comments.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to come and, and let me speak in front of this forum. I really do appreciate it. Events such as this are an important way for the community to connect with the candidates. It is so important. I'm an analytical person who evaluates issues by asking questions, researching options, and considering the effects of possible choices. Decisions must be made with a keen eye toward the future, both short term and long term. And the consequences of those decisions need to be evaluated. We must analyze the data and the projections to ensure that our facilities and student-to-staff ratio are optimized and meet the primary goal of providing high-quality education and opportunities to students who are enrolled in our district. Board members must be cognizant that they're representing the community and engage stakeholders to welcome input and feedback. The spirit of democracy thrives on voter participation, and elected officials are first and foremost representatives of the community. I am running for school board because I want to work for and with the stakeholders of this community and our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pexa. Ms. Ruel, you have 30, I'm sorry, 30 seconds is wrong. 90 seconds is right. 90 seconds for you, Ms. Ruel.
Thank you. I think the first thing I want to do is just take a second here on a rebuttal of what Mr. Peterson said regarding last Monday's board meeting, where a member was shut down. You know, per Robert's rules, we just can't, we have an approved agenda. We can't just bring ideas to it. So I would say the board member was told to submit the request to the next study session. So I'd just rebut that. I think, I want to thank everyone here tonight. I want to thank the chamber and the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think it's a great opportunity to see and hear all the candidates and to hear what's being said and, and what their vision is. I think Prior Lake Savage delivers on its mission to educate all learners, to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And I know many of you have probably heard that lots of times because Dr. Stallow says it on pretty much every time she speaks to the public. And it is the mission that we guide ourselves by each day. And I hope that, you know that I'm a fan of the district. I think there's a clear line here on people that are supportive of the district and people that aren't. So I think, you know, voters, educate yourself on what you want for your school district. I think, I hope over the last eight years, I've proven that you, that I can be a leader for this district. We've done many things. We've changed leaderships, we've added buildings, we've done new and innovative programs, and our community supports our public schools, has and always will. I have strong faith in our community, and I want to continue to do that, and I hope you will continue to keep the future bright.
Thank you, Ms. Ruel. And Mr. Velazquez, you have 90 seconds for your closing comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to be here and for allowing for this panel to be here, for all of us to be able to meet each other and interact with one another. I'd like to begin by thank you, thanking Mr. Mondal for sharing something very personal about the loss of his father. I also lost my parents when I was young. My, my parents divorced, and then my mother later died. So I was left alone, and it was education, a very strong education, that propelled me to change my lot in life. It propelled me to continue studying, to become a contributing member in the community, and to want to give back here at the school level, not at any other level, at the school board level, because I believe education is a foundation for a very strong community so that everybody has opportunities to thrive. We have a very diverse community, and it continues to become more diverse, ethnicities, religions, abilities of, of children of all levels. And we need to make sure that we have opportunities for every single one of them so that they can reach their fullest potential, so they can grow as artists, educators, professionals, and come back to the community and build it stronger. Come back, have families here. I offer financial guidance. I have experience managing public funds, and I want to support and be here for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. That will end tonight's forum. On behalf of myself, Ms. Fleck, and Ms. Thayer, and, and the entire Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce, we want to say thank you, especially to our candidates who agreed to come out and participate in this forum and to allow the public to be informed about their decision on November 6th. We also want to thank the city of Prior Lake for opening their doors for us and to allow us to host this event here. And we want to thank all of you for coming tonight, as well as the viewers watching at home. Thank you especially to all of those of you who submitted questions in advance. The school district will be, will have access and video of tonight's program on its website until the election, so we will also be sharing that information on the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce website. Last but not least, don't forget to get out and vote on November 6th. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.